All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Mayor Zaring.
Present. All right, thanks. We have a quorum. I'm gonna start off with some ceremonial matters here first. Can you hear me? Okay, gotcha. All right, we're gonna start off with a couple of... Got some service awards here. And we're gonna start off with Matthew Beckman. Oh, sir. What's that? He just wants to grab this and go. He thinks he's gonna get out of here without talking.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, so Matthew Beckman, this here is presented on behalf of the citizens of Harrisonville, Missouri. It's in grateful appreciation for five years of dedicated service to the city. We really appreciate it, sir. All right. What do you guys say?
I just really appreciate everything, everything you know, you know, for us. And I've got a bit of pride for the city as far as for me and my career here in the electric department. So just know that we're working, you know, hard, you know, a lot of changes going on with the electric department. But me and Brent are working, you know, good together and working hard together. And we've got a lot of kids coming up, and we're training. We're doing, you know, our best with what we got. And we appreciate all the backing from all you guys. And we need it. So it goes both ways, as far as making our job easier, making everything roll. So I appreciate everything.
Well, we appreciate you. Let me tell you what, electric company, if you're still here after five years of all the work you put in, all the effort you did in the past five years, that's a dedication to that.
So I enjoy it.
Well, you guys do a great job. We appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Daniel Barnett. Somebody's gonna have to take his picture. And Daniel's still with us, too, after five years, man. This is...
That's only been five more years than those times.
So again, on behalf of the city, the citizens of the city, we want to present to you a grateful appreciation for five years of dedicated service. I think he was taking pictures of our feet. All right, what you got, Daniel?
I'll keep it pretty short. I just really appreciate the opportunity to work and serve the community that I grew up in. My mom grew up here, and she moved here when I was four, and I've lived here ever since. So it means a lot to be able to serve the community that I came up through and just work where I know. I know there's good people here, so I appreciate the opportunity to serve that.
We appreciate you. Daniel, he keeps me straight. He gets the agendas ready. I mean, he makes sure things... Probably saw him up there getting me straight before we started this evening. So you are greatly appreciated by me and everybody who do a lot of good work and part of workforce. Man, he's walking.
Yay!
All right, next we have a Fire Prevention Month proclamation. That's what all the fire people are here for. And I was told that each one of them had to say something.
Trust me, you don't wanna get caught.
No. And just before I read all of this, you know, again, I can't thank you guys enough. And it's not just something we say. I mean, we talk about it all the time, whether it's in a meeting or outside the meeting, or if we're just talking one-on-one. But we're always talking about how great you guys are, how dedicated you are to serving our community. We know the challenges that you guys have, and we're doing the best we can to meet those challenges and make it even a better place to work, hopefully. So we really do appreciate all of you guys. So let me go ahead and read the Fire Prevention... There's a lot of reading here, too, so bear with me. "Fire Prevention Month: Whereas the City of Harrisonville is committed to ensuring the safety of all its residents, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and whereas the Harrisonville Emergency Services is currently a combination of career and volunteer staff whose services include fire suppression, hazardous materials responses, confined space rescue, and numerous other rescue procedures, and whereas the Harrisonville Emergency Services strives to continually educate our citizens about the hazards of fire and proper fire prevention techniques. Now therefore, I, Mike Zaring, Mayor of City of Harrisonville and the Board of Aldermen, designate the month of October 2023 as Fire Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to use the utmost caution around fire and open flames now and throughout the year." Thank you. All right. Jump on up there. I'll stand out here. How about that? There you go. All right, everybody. One, two, three, again. All right, Chief, you get to speak a little bit.
I'm gonna let the fire marshal do it.
All right, fire marshal. That's why fire marshals do it. All right, I like it.
So we're gonna be out... We're gonna be out in the community next week. We got several activities at the schools, mostly in the morning. We normally, every year, do pre-K through third grade. We picked up a couple of extra schools, a new one down the street at First Baptist Church. So we basically show them the normal stuff and the stop, drop, and roll, et cetera, to all the school kids. And the kids remember that quite a bit. We get phone calls and a lot of Facebook comments after we do that. The kids go home and just like dithering off with it. So they kind of will start this week with their teachers, and then they will go... Next week, they'll be where we come in and actually show them what a fireman looks like, all dressed up. And we also... We let them see the trucks and climb around the trucks, and we show them all the tools and stuff. It just depends on the age of the children that we deal with. And believe it or not, there are several from years past where we've done it, and they've always talked about how we've done it really well in the future. So if you see everybody out at the schools and stuff, don't think it's on fire or anything, because we'll probably be in the fire lanes, but we're excited to do it every year.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Just a word. Headquarters up on the square is having a benefit breakfast for fire employees to pick up. Fire prevention talk pancakes start at nine o'clock.
What day is that?
Saturday.
Saturday at nine?
At nine o'clock. Everybody's welcome. All the proceeds are being donated to the fires.
Awesome. Thank you all very much. You guys get to do all that next week while still chasing fires and ambulances and all that. Yeah, we appreciate you guys. We really do. Yeah, well, that's true, yeah. Yep. Well, know that you're appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right, next up, public participation. I think we have an agenda request from Mr. Bill Cook.
Well, I want to thank the board for letting me come back and share kind of our vision on tourism and what we're trying to do in the community.
Hey, sir, real quick, could I just get you to... I know most people know you in here, but your name, your address, and then the attorney will give you the guidelines on how we go.
Okay, be glad to. My name is Bill Cook. I am a resident of Harrisonville. I work with the Chamber on the Tourism Committee. My address is 503 Cottage Lane. And I retired off of the farm about four years ago, moved to Harrisonville, and I'm practicing retiring. So not doing very well, but I'm doing the best I can.
Sure thing. Sir, I just want to let you know, you have three minutes. I'll give you a warning when you have one minute remaining, and the board can vote to allow you more time.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. So I have... I think you probably do have some information in front of you. And what I'd like to do is just share a little bit of our vision with the Chamber and with tourism and with making Harrisonville an end destination. So our whole goal is to bring more people into our businesses, into the businesses here in Harrisonville. I do have three children, and... I have four children, but I got three of them vested in Harrisonville on the square. So that... Part of our motives is because we have children, grandchildren, next generation. So, you know, as a grandfather, a great-grandfather, so we're just trying to do some things that's really positive for the community. Tourism seems to be one of those. Actually, my son, Mike Cook, who was at the Brick House, he actually has graduated with his master's degree in tourism. And so we kind of use that on the farm. If you know where we're at, we're out on Seven Highway and Seven towards Garden City. We've been doing... We've been there for about 52 years. We've done those tourism practices, but basically it's been in agriculture, a lot about grains and education and how to make farmers more aware of what they can do on their farm to be more profitable. So we just kind of brought that concept along with John Foster and Obie Carl and the folks at the Chamber. It's been a really blessing to work with those folks. So our whole thing is, we're asking, whether it's a license, whatever Harrisonville would like to use this for. We would like to use a vehicle. It's just kind of a way to represent the businesses, promote their businesses. And we just use it on certain events. Now, if you want to take a look, your last page, this is actually the vehicle that we're looking to ask if you will allow us to license here or whatever terminology that...
One minute remaining.
Whatever terminology you would have for us. And if you want to look at the next two pages, this is... And I don't mean to be putting something in for you before you've approved it, but this is for the upcoming festival this weekend. And we had to go ahead and get some artwork done and things done to be efficient. So the first event that we would be doing is at the festival. And so that is what this vehicle would be doing, is towing people back and forth to a specific location. So if you want to see the location, that's on this page here. So my understanding is we would be doing... Talking with me, we would be taking people down to this event and then bringing them back. So that... I think I'm understanding that's about a four- or five-hour event. So this weekend, this is what this vehicle would be doing.
Pardon me, that's your first three minutes?
Okay.
I'd like to let him go ahead and continue.
All right. All right, I think the board's in agreement. Three more.
Secondly, is I know that most of you know John Foster and a lot of the people that are involved in the tourism side. We've got a lot of good things going in tourism right now. A lot of the QR codes that they're working with, Harrisonville High School, they're working with Raypack. So there's a lot of really cool things happening. So this would be an example. This page here would be example of where we would want to take an event. So when the events are coming to town, I think they have events maybe every Thursday, second Thursday of the month, where you have a lot of people in town. So we go out and we promote. Now, this is all free rides, so we actually go out and promote those businesses. We put some little deals together with the businesses so that we can get more people to go to that business and do some business with the business. I've said business a lot, haven't I? So anyway, if you have any questions, that's kind of what we're asking for. We really don't know exactly how the city would want to work with us, and we're very open to work with you however you see fit. Does anybody have a question?
Thank you, sir. All right.
I think this is a great idea. My only question I have is on insurance.
We actually have... We have a... We have a million-dollar policy ourselves with a $5 million umbrella. And then like, for instance, we work with the Chamber, and so we work with their insurance also. So they have a rider. So anybody that we work with, we would be... We have a lot of insurance. And we can provide those insurance information for you if you'd like. We have a million-dollar coverage with a $5 million umbrella, and then we also work with whoever we're working with, with their insurance.
Yes.
I just had a real quick question, Bill. So you're picking up from where and just... You're picking up at different locations and transporting to other locations?
Yes, ma'am.
Within that parameter of the other line?
And a perfect example is this one here.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
There's little circles there. There's four locations. And so what we'd be doing is picking them up at the parking lot, and we just run that rotation about every 30 minutes. So we pick them up, set them off. Now, each business has a little way for us to promote their business and for us to measure the success of that. So each business, they actually pay for the little sticker on the shovel. And then after we do the shuttle, we can see how that business... How that shuttle has actually worked to create more business for that local business.
Thank you.
Yes.
Would you... Is there a possibility that large groups or larger groups who might travel from out of town and stay at a hotel, would you be offering shuttle services from hotels?
Not at this point. No, the only shuttles... We're a specific event at this point. Now, if it evolves, you know, I wouldn't say we wouldn't come back and say, hey, listen. But this program is just for small events, to create more, I guess, value for those people that come to town that's looking at us as this end destination. But we are promoting, you know, your B&Bs. You're getting a lot of those now on the square, people coming and staying all night. So that's a great question. Did I get you answered okay?
Alderman Davidson.
Who's the vehicle and trailer owned by, and who's the insurance coverage through?
The guy Steve Tate is the insurance, and he's out of Jeff City, and he has all of our insurance. The insurance is under a company called Ag Team, our Ag Team Professionals. And so our insurance company is all under one big umbrella that's down on the farm. So if you've ever been Seven Highway, all of our insurance is under one company.
Okay. And who's the principals on that Ag Team?
There's two of us. That would be myself and a guy by the name of John Ortiz.
Okay. I like... I was gonna ask the same question, obviously, that Dave asked, but we want to ensure that we keep, obviously, the coverage current, obviously. So I don't know how you would want to... How a city would want to do that, but I think we need to ensure that we are continually getting an updated insurance policy to ensure it stays current. So that would be my only...
Any other questions from the board? Yes, sir. Go ahead, Alderman Turner.
I just care about the other map. I mean, what's the yellow line from the square down to Camp Reader?
I apologize. My hearing is not as good as it used to be. So if you'll speak up a little bit, I'm...
I... The other map, there's a yellow line from the square down to Camp Reader. What was that?
Yes, sir.
I mean, is that...
Well, one of the reasons that we're going down, John and Obie and the Chamber is working really hard on the history of Harrisonville, some of the older buildings. So they got the QR codes that they're working with. So it's a way for us not only to help the businesses, but it also tells the story of Harrisonville. So we go... Actually, we start, we go all the way down, kind of some of the older homes and stuff, down by the funeral home, and then come back. So it's just kind of a big loop. And then each corner of the square, we actually stop and drop off people.
And then also, how many people does that trailer...
14. And keep in mind, on the tourism side, as much as we are hauling people and telling our story, it is a vehicle that we're... They see go by, they see the signs. It's a little bit about selling the sizzle of Harrisonville. And some of the attributes that you guys have here with the courthouse and the burnt monument, there's just so much history here, and we're just trying to open that history up to a lot of people, a lot of venues. We just see this as a start. And, you know, if it's working well, you know, we may be coming back to you for a bus or a bigger vehicle or whatever. And so it's got to work for you, Harrisonville. The big issue would be is it's kind of on a trial basis. We're just asking for, you know, event by event. So you can literally say, you know, you want this event, you don't want that event. And so that's kind of the essence. We're just startups. So... And again, we don't charge anybody. So unless somebody wants me to pass the hat, well, I'd be glad to do that. But we are on a fixed income situation.
Any more questions from the board? Go ahead.
I would just ask Alex, is there anything that we're missing? Is there anything we need to address that needs to be addressed while he's...
Sure, and Mayor had reached out to me about liability for this. So at a minimum, I can tell you that we would need to evaluate it. The city would be looking at to be named an additionally insured on your policy, not just simply that you are insured, but that the city is named as an additionally insured entity as well as your all's agreement to completely indemnify the city. Because I don't see a lot of a liability here, at least right now, for the city, but that's never stopped a plaintiff's attorney. And so if one comes, because people fall out, then we want to make sure that the cost to defend it, all the costs are going to be on you and your company. The city's not going to have to spend taxpayer money because they're allowing this. But those are just kind of my initial thoughts before we dive into it further.
Chamber as part of our insurance. So if we're doing something for a event, we're actually incorporating that event or whoever we're working with, the event, with the liability insurance. Now, I'm not an attorney, so that would... I will have to turn that piece over to like an Aaron Orrin.
Happy to do that, yep.
Yep.
Good question.
Now, the biggest issue that we've got facing us, of course, we've been working to get in front of you here for a little bit, but the biggest issue we got facing us right now is this weekend. And I don't know that I can, unless I've got a really fast attorney and a lot of... I don't know that I can get every piece of information for you at that point before Friday.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, if you can have your attorney reach out to me or give me his information...
Do you mind if I grab a card from you or something?
No, that's great.
Before I leave, and I will get it to Aaron tomorrow.
Yep.
No, good questions. Anything else from the board?
Sounds good.
Before I'm gonna... So that was a couple of the things that, of course, we had to come with, that we always have to think about, liability to the city.
Absolutely, totally.
The other one is safety. And I want to ask Chief Hofer if he would come and talk a little bit, maybe some concerns that we may have with this. Hopefully, I'm not putting you on the spot here, Chief, but...
It's when you pay me the big bucks.
Is that it?
Yeah. I don't know what the route is, so I can't address that. The concerns are people getting in hot and off, maybe when it's not stopped. It's kind of a parade rule there, that it's dangerous, obviously, to get off a moving vehicle. Who's going to be observing that? The liability that we discussed earlier, and he talked about how he partners with the Chamber. While the city is a co-sponsor of this upcoming event, too, so we could be attached. So I would encourage Alex to make sure that we're not covered under because we are attached as a co-sponsor to the Chamber's event. I would like to see the vehicle get... Or the trailer get inspected. I've just seen one picture of it, and, you know, they've put some chairs up, which is concerning, you know. Are the chairs secured to the trailer? Things like that. And if the Highway Patrol would approve that, make sure the vehicle is currently licensed as well as the trailer, things like that. My biggest concern is should somebody fall off that and get injured? I'm sure people are going... I don't know what hours they're operating, but unfortunately, we arrest people for being impaired all day long. So you have somebody that's maybe impaired using this. It's a concern.
Okay, perfect.
I kind of went all around the board there. I hope I answered the question.
Well, and Mr. Cook, I know you've been trying to get on the agenda here. Last meeting that got canceled, we know you were trying to get on there. So you're right, we got a little bit of time crunch here to be able to...
Could I address the chief's...
Yes, sir, come on. Yes, sir, come on back up, yep.
They... And I'll be glad... Everything is welded down, everything's solid. They ring a bell to get the thing going, and the Jeep that's pulling it is monitored so that we have a camera, so we can actually see everything that's going on in the trailer. And I would be more than... Well, if we do get to use it during the festival, or I can bring it up ahead of time to... For the chief to take a look at, or however you'd like to do it, Chief.
I'd like to blame the Highway Patrol, so...
See, did you have something? I thought you'd... Okay, I didn't know if you were looking at me because you wanted to say something or not. Okay, all right.
But anything that you... I mean, these are all good questions, and we definitely want to make sure that we get you satisfied on whether it is safety. And you can take a look at the vehicle. I would be glad to give you all a ride, too, so...
Okay, yes, Alderman Davidson.
Okay, so you said the chairs are welded down?
Yes, sir.
The rear is open?
No, sir.
It's closed?
It's closed. There's a step on there, and there's a sign that says "Safety" on it. And then we've got plenty of lights on the trailer, so you can't fall off the trailer.
Okay.
And you can't fall out of the trailer. Now, you could fall getting in the trailer.
Sure.
Or if you'd stumbled or something like that, but...
Now, you say you've got a camera back into the trailer. Do you have communications into the trailer as well from the...
Yes, yes.
So is somebody in the trailer with the 14 individuals back there?
Well, there could be, but we don't right now. Whoever's running the vehicle is actually watching the crowd that's in the trailer.
Okay, so he's operating and watching... He's operating and watching the video as well, both?
Well, it's really not a video. It's just a camera.
Okay.
And then we have our little signs in there. We have a little... Just like a trolley. If you wanted to... If you have an emergency you want to stop, you just ring the bell.
Right. But when a trolley, you've got immediate communications with the driver, and this would you necessarily wouldn't, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. That would be a little bit of a concern of mine without having the communications back there. But I couldn't see the rear of the trailer, so that's the reason I assumed it was open. But you say it's closed, so we're fine.
It's closed up to... You've got to step. You've got to step up to get in on the trailer.
Okay.
But it is closed off.
And it's closed by the driver of the Jeep before they take off.
That's correct.
All right, Alderman Dorhoff?
My question.
All right, good question. Okay.
So it won't be stopping along the route. It just stops at the location.
Just stops at the four location.
And that's it?
That's it. No, there's no way jumping on, jumping on. Just they stop at one spot. They can't get off or get on, and they go to the next spot. So we're just as concerned about safety as everybody here is because we wouldn't want anybody to be getting hurt, and we're trying to promote tourism and things going on in Harrisonville.
When do you have an appointment with Highway Patrol?
I talked to them today, and I thought I was going to get a call back. First, they would... They asked me if I would bring it to the trailer up there. And then I said, well, it's going to be difficult, and they have somebody that lives here in town. So they were going to call me and make an appointment to come out and look at the trailer.
Okay.
I haven't received that call yet.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay, so I'm going to ask that we do, because we are in kind of a time crunch, like you said. And, you know, I think everybody thinks it's a great idea. There's just some things we need to close the loop on.
Sure.
And make sure the city's covered, make sure that we've got all the safety issues and concerns taken care of. So what I would ask is, is if we would be able to... You've got his card for your attorney. Is to get your attorney with him as soon as possible. Chief, if you could come up with a list of your concerns again, and if you need to see... If you could like send an email or something to the administrator saying, hey, these are my main concerns. If you want to see the trailer, inspect that stuff beforehand, anything that you need, you know, beforehand to be taken care of so that we've done everything we can, that would be great.
I could certainly do that. And I was just gonna text who I think's going to do the inspection from the Highway Patrol.
Okay.
If I can go with him at the same time.
Awesome. I appreciate it. Yep, I appreciate it. And then what we'll do tonight is we'll vote to either pass it or not pass it, contingent upon meeting the safety requirements of the chief and the attorney, what the attorneys figure out. Is everybody good with that? Okay.
I'll make that motion. That obviously it gets inspected by the patrol. The chief obviously goes with the patrol to look at... For him to look at the trailer as well. And then any discussion that needs to be had in between our attorney and their attorney is handled, and Alex feels comfortable with that discussion, then I would say let's go ahead and allow them to do it this weekend. That would be my idea.
Okay, good on that. So you got a motion from Alderman David, oh, do you have a question?
May I address one issue?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
With the, the visual and audio communication between the front and the back, there's systems that would allow you to both monitor and have two-way audio with those people for relatively cheap price, you know, since you're in the starter phase. Would that be something that you would love to do?
It would, it's certainly something that we could look at in the future. I don't know that we could turn it around too quick, but what I could do is I could have somebody that actually rode on the, one of those 14 chairs that would be there with whoever was riding it.
With a hotspot and a certain camera, you could do it tomorrow. You could do it within a matter of 15 minutes.
Well, I'm 78 years old, and I'm a little bit technology dysfunctional.
But something, something we can definitely address, I think, and see as a concern. Yep.
Bill, is it, is it the Chamber that's doing this, or is it a business?
No, actually, we're working, we're working with the Chamber. Now, we don't, we're, we're donating the, the trailer, there's no money transactions, and we, and it's all, all the things we're doing is with the Chamber.
Okay.
And all the promotions with the Chamber.
To follow with our ordinances, make sure you're, whoever's the company doing it has got with our business, business license?
Sure.
To make sure we have a up-to-date business license?
That's what I was asking for, is a business license.
Yeah.
Originally. And I don't have a business, I don't have a business license today. So you would have to issue us a business license with those concerns.
Contingent upon those, but in the business license, it's pretty clear-cut about insurance requirements, all that.
So could I get a copy of that, what you, what you require? I've never seen one yet, so.
It's, it's online.
Oh, well. There you go. I'm going to get on my computer when I leave.
But if, if you want to, if you make contact, if you want to make sure you're meeting the deadlines and stuff, Jeremy would be the person right there.
Okay.
To make sure that you get in contact with him. If you don't find it online?
Jeremy?
Just call me or text.
Which, who's Jeremy?
Jeremy, right here, yep.
Hi, Jeremy.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Jeremy, it's you've got to actually speak with about business license, but she's going to handle all of those things at the office.
Okay. Well, I want to say I really appreciate you taking time to meet share with you, and thank you for giving me the opportunity.
We got, we got one more question, Alderman Franklin?
With the visual and the communication, you said that there would be a camera in the Jeep part?
Well, that's, yeah, that's the display.
To watch.
The camera's actually, the camera's in, on the shuttle, in the shuttle.
Okay.
And the, and the, the display is in the Jeep.
Okay. Is there any concerns about keeping their eye on that and what's going on in the back and driving as well? Would that?
Well, I'm sure there's, is, I mean, I don't know. I don't, that's, that's a functionality question, and I'm just assuming that we can do that function, okay? But, I mean, I would say there's always a concern about, you know, taking your eyes off the camera while you're driving because you're going to have to drive, so.
Exactly.
I think that's a legitimate question, and there, I would say, yes, there, it would always be a concern being distracted and driving. But if you were driving a tractor, or if you're driving a hay wagon, or if you're driving anything, you're going to have that same issue. But I don't know that you have hay wagons anymore, but.
Well, I think what works, Ken, from his, from his inquiry earlier about the audio, you wouldn't necessarily have to always keep your eyes on the camera to ensure that everybody is safe in the trailer. Or if you've got audio, they would know that you, they could communicate, communicate back and forth.
Right.
And I think that's where Sandy's coming from here, sorry, I'm going to first name. In regards to the safety, as far as separation of your time watching the road, and obviously, just like cell phones and anything else, it separates your time. So therefore, I, I think maybe this weekend, if we approve it, I would, I, I think to amend that just a little bit, that you have somebody riding in the Jeep that could monitor the monitor that's of the camera in the trailer until you can maybe adapt with that, but video or the audio.
So would it be acceptable if we just had somebody in the trailer that, that communicated directly with the driver of the Jeep?
Yeah, I think as long as you've got a communications there, as far as that goes.
That would be the easiest thing for us to actually execute.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think if everybody else is okay with it.
Yeah.
Well, that's definitely, that's definitely a concern, and I think if, I think that would solve the problem for the, for the time being anyways, until maybe the next time we come up with a different system than that.
Sure, and again, I appreciate your, the opportunity, and I will get that online. I may ask you to help me a little bit.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, chief.
One other thing that I hadn't considered till our Chief Sullivan reminded me that we need to check for proper licensing, not only of the vehicle, to make sure that the operator of the vehicle, they may need a CBL.
It may require, thanks, chief, yes, it very well may require because it's more than eight, I think, well, it used to be eight, I think, more than eight passengers. I don't know when it's.
Probably Class E at least.
At least a Class E, yes.
Yeah, if you could, yes, if you could pass that on to us, that would be great, yep. Yep. Yes, sir. Yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to open it back up, yeah, yep. Okay, so we've got a motion on the table right now.
Yeah, and I want to amend it just to say that I'm sure that they've got somebody, additionally to what I said, that they've got somebody either in the, in the trailer or somebody in the vehicle being able to monitor the passengers that are in the trailer. So whether it's monitoring in the trailer and communications with the driver, or they have them in the actual Jeep itself.
Okay.
At least like this specifically.
Yeah, I don't know, so the second came from Alderman Dorhoff?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so let's, roll call, please.
Alderman Mills? Alderman Turner? Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
All right, so attorneys are going to talk. Chief, you're going to get us a list of concerns and we'll work with Mr. Cook to hopefully make this thing happen for this weekend.
I appreciate you very much, and if I can get that information tomorrow, I'll get really busy with it, and I'll get Aaron and the insurance. I'll probably ought to just have my insurance company contact somebody.
Okay.
Whoever that is, you know, city attorney or whoever.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Yep. Okay, moving on, approval of the minutes. We have the Board of Aldermen regular meeting from September 5th, 2023. Those are in your packet.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, got a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those stand approved. Then we have the Board of Aldermen Work Session from September 5th, 2023.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those stand approved. Next item up on our agenda items, we have Council Bill 86.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the appointment of Larry Fauch to the Board of Aldermen.
All right, and we present Mr. Fauch. I got to meet with him here about a week ago, week and a half ago, maybe. Got to know him a little bit more than just by name and face, so presenting him, appreciate him volunteering, stepping up. He's going to bring a lot to our board here when he comes on board here. So I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you. Come on up, Mr. Fauch, we're going to swear you in and put you to work. And don't worry, yeah, it's too late now, man. And it's all easy stuff.
I know where you live.
Dude, they has to buy supper.
Thanks for the presentation we just had.
I'm just, I'm waiting for your door. Your bike, this can work? All right, cool.
Mr. Fauch, you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Larry Fauch.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm that I possess all the qualifications, that I possess all the qualifications prescribed for the office, prescribed for the office of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville.
Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville. That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of the State of Missouri?
And of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws?
The provisions of all laws.
Of this state?
Of this state.
Affecting cities of the fourth class?
Affecting cities of the fourth class.
And the ordinances of the City of Harrisonville?
And the ordinances of the City of Harrisonville.
And that I will faithfully demean myself?
And that I will faithfully demean myself in the office of Aldermen Ward Two and the Office of Aldermen Ward Two, for which I was appointed? For which I was appointed on the second day of October 2023. On the second day of October 2023. Congratulations.
Welcome, sir. You can take a seat, you're, to your right, my left, we've got an open seat over here for you. All right, so we will move on to our next item. It is Council Bill 87.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the appointment of Mindy Sidwell to the Park Board.
All right, I present Mindy Sidwell as Mindy Sidwell here. Have not met her, so come on up, Mindy. But I got to talk, got to talk to her on the phone for quite some time. Great history, she's going to be representing the trails in our parks. Says she's been on them trails for what, 40 years now? Is that right?
More than 30.
More than 30, okay. Expand, so I can tell you right now, she would be a great asset to our park board, and I'm going to present her to you. Is there anything that you would like to say?
I'm just excited for this opportunity. I think our community is extremely blessed to have such a nice park system. I spend a lot of time at the park. I've lived here for more than 23 years, and my, my kids are going to the park too. So I'm just excited.
We appreciate it, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Man, that was a, that was a motion and a second all at one time, okay. I think it was Alderman Dorhoff had the, the motion, and it was seconded by Alderman Franklin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Fauch?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you, Mindy, for coming out, and thank you for volunteering. It's, you guys that volunteer, we got a lot of them that are in the audience right now, several of them that do a lot of volunteering, and it means a lot to the citizens. A lot of citizens don't see what you guys do, but you volunteer your time to come out and make our city better, so we appreciate it.
I am a volunteer of also Locust Square.
That's right, yep. Yep, there you go. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Welcome aboard. All right, next we have Council Bill 88.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Kevin Wood to the TIF Commission.
All right, and Kevin Wood is not in the audience tonight, but again, he's been a long time on the TIF Commission and on several other boards that we have in the city, and this is a reappointment to that TIF Commission, so I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Fauch?
Aye.
All right, so that, Council Bill 88 is now Resolution 2023-39. And Daniel, did you need the other resolutions on that? Are you good? Okay, got that, okay. All right, next is Council Bill 89.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Scott Milner to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, so again, Mr. Milner is not out here tonight. However, he has served on our Planning and Zoning Commission, has done several other things in the community for us, has agreed that he would continue on that committee as well, or on that zoning board. So we will present him tonight.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion from Alderman Davidson and a second from Alderman Franklin.
I need to abstain from this vote, please.
Okay, and Alderman Milner is abstaining from this vote, so roll call, please.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Fauch?
Aye.
Alderman Milner is abstaining.
All right, Council Bill 89 is Resolution 2023-40. Next, Council Bill 90.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Jeff Kreiderman to the Board of Building and Engineering Appeals.
All right, so Jeff Kreiderman, I don't believe he is, I have not met him in person, is not here tonight, but he has graciously agreed to continue on the Building and Engineering Appeals Board. Again, he's served on there for several years now. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
I second.
All right, we've got a motion from Alderman Milner with a, or a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Fauch. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Fauch?
Aye.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff? Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
All right, Council Bill 90 is now Resolution 2023-41. Uh, next, I'm going to open a public hearing on the final plot for Harrisonville Commons Lots 1 through 3 and Track A.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. Uh, Christine Stanton, Community Development Director, and as stated, this is for the final plat of Harrisonville Commons Lots 1 through 3 and Track A. Uh, the final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat that you approved previously. Um, it, it's been in compliance with several of the conditions, restrictions, requirements within the chapters, uh, for zoning and subdivision, um, and other applicable ordinances, design standards. Um, we had conditions on the preliminary plat and the preliminary development plan that are also on this final plat. Uh, you'll notice there is an additional condition that was added at the planning zoning, and I left that on here. There is an attached memo that the applicant may, uh, address as well, if you have further questions on that, with kind of update of traffic review with school in session. Um, also, as previously discussed, Oriole Street is proposed to extend through this site from East Mechanic to East Elm Street, and will have the required sidewalks on both sides. The, uh, planning and zoning met on September 21st and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen of the final plat. And so as stated, the recommendations are approval, um, with conditions that the eastbound and westbound left turn lanes of 140 feet in length and a hundred-foot taper shall be constructed at the intersection of Oriole Street and, uh, Mo. 7 or East Mechanic, as recommended in the original traffic impact analysis. Um, and it's already shown on the plat, preliminary, the final, and the preliminary development plan, and final development plan, which staff is currently reviewing. Uh, and also that an updated traffic impact analysis capturing the traffic impacts from nearby school provided, um, recommendations appropriately incorporated into development plan prior to approval. As I stated, there's a memo in this packet that addresses looking at the changes in traffic with school in session, um, and that it doesn't really change the recommendations that came out of the transportation impact analysis.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody here that would like to speak any further on that? No? Okay. I will close the, uh, public hearing, and we will move along to Council Bill 91.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving the final plat of Harrisonville Commons Lots 1 through 3 and Track A located north of Mechanic Street, Missouri Highway 7, and south of Elm Street on property located at 1,800 East Mechanic Street in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
And this is a first reading. Questions, Board? Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just have a question. I remember we talked about before with traffic and that being the through street, and we were curious about people cutting through, you know, like out of school and stuff, but we had, I thought we had talked about speed bumps or something, but, but then we don't do speed bumps on public streets, so.
Could you use the mic, please, so we can understand what you're saying?
Okay.
There you go. Yeah, you got to get up in there, you got to get up into it.
Sorry, John.
Go, come on up, sir, you come on up, yep.
But, no, uh, we were concerned about kids and stuff, how the school cutting through that new street if it continues, and we had talked about speed bumps and whatnot in there, but then, we normally don't do speed bumps on our public streets, so I don't know how we, would we or could we address that?
If I may.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Steve Walker, 6127 Northwest Pine Ridge Circle, Parkville, Missouri. Uh, we went back through, I think our discussion was here and with, uh, planning and zoning also on what we could do, what we try and do, and I think what we talked about is a solution, is we have like a four-way intersection with two driveways going on to Oriole, and that we would put stop signs and make that a four-way stop in between.
Okay.
Whether that would stop anybody, at least it would give you the right to have a police officer there to.
Slow them down.
And to, to enforce that. And our traffic study showed that, yes, there was a reduction in one of the peak hours and an increase in the other, but it did not, uh, trigger any larger left-hand turn lanes or anything when we redid the counts. And the schools in session is required.
Right, but I'm just saying, when school gets out, the kids are in a hurry to leave, they'll be turning down that first road there to get down to try to beat buses or, or other kids.
And again, we're.
If you do the stop signs.
We put the stop signs there.
Yeah.
It gives you, I think it makes it a lot easier, gives you a way to enforce it. It's not a real big expense, if something happens, it's easier, easier to take out.
Well, because, I mean, it's not that far, I mean, a block or block and a half, but the kids are going to speed much as they can to get, try to beat somebody.
Thing is, is two stop signs in there, right? There's going to be two stop signs on that street within, is that correct?
I think one.
There'd be one in the, like, in the middle of.
In the middle of it.
It'd be a four-way stop.
Okay, gotcha.
You'll have one off of, from the north, and one on.
One on the north, yeah.
And then you'll have one in the middle.
Yeah.
Try to do a couple, and then there.
So if you're in a hurry, you're probably going to avoid the stop signs, is what you're going to do.
No, I mean, I, I think putting a stop sign would be the easiest way, because I know before we talked about speed bumps or humps and everything else, but we don't do those on public streets, so, I mean, so I would just, I know what kids usually has to cut through, I mean, there'd be a lot of people living there and taking it normally, and we don't need the extra kids running through.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the Board?
That's it.
No, the only thing I, the only thing I had to ask is, have we seen the actual renderings of what the buildings are going to look like? If we did, I missed them.
Yes, that was in our final development plan application that we, and in the preliminary development plan application.
Was it, okay. So the actual picture, drawing of what it is going to look like, okay. I, I missed them, I looked back and I couldn't find them.
It's more of a, uh, I know that we're varying it a little bit, we're not going to just have it all cookie cutter the same, it'll vary a little bit in color every one of them, though, and if you look at that, I think it'll look pretty sharp in there, and it'll, it won't be like your typical apartment complex.
I had, had somebody ask me, and I looked back and I could not find it to save my life, so, I knew it probably was.
Sure, passing around there. Any other questions while he's showing the pictures there?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm.
Yes, sir.
A little new to the topic here, but I, I assume that, um, there's been a lot of discussion about, about turn lanes, uh, on Mechanic Street?
Yes, sir, and that's one of the big concerns is that you're going to have to have turn lanes in that area. I mean, with that Dollar General there now, it's already causing problems without turn lanes, so you add a 300-unit apartment.
And that's a MODOT thing?
Yes, sir, you, you want to address that, sir, you can. Yep, it's a MODOT.
I mean, it was requirement from the traffic study that has been approved by MODOT, it's 140-foot adherent storage lane with a, with a hundred-foot taper both sides, both directions. We'll widen from the center out, and you'll have left-hand turn lanes going both directions.
Did they indicate, you, you said that the traffic doesn't justify any kind of a, a light there? Okay, okay.
No, good question.
There's a lot more traffic than that for lights. MODOT's not going to be really excited about putting more lights.
Yep, good questions. Any other question? I, I do have a question, you may want to stay up there since nobody else is going to ask it, I am going to. When does demolition start on that hospital?
We're going to have a big party when it does.
Yes, we are.
And we will all be there.
We have been working, uh, with our lenders and with the money part of it, and we have to get through this final plat, uh, condition before we can actually pull that permit, so that we, they want, the lenders want that, knowing that this isn't going to go backwards on them if we did that. So as soon as we get through, I believe we got to through this meeting, we can get through around, or do we have to wait till the 16th? Okay, we'll have to wait till after the 16th. We, we'll be ready to go, and I think, uh, Mr. Smith didn't verify, we, we're in here, we're ready for a demo permit and a site disturbance permit, all we got to do is say a contractor, and we've had emails before, I believe that we're on that, we're, we're ready to pull a permit as soon as we're allowed to.
And the timeline, so you've got the contractors lined up, so the 16th, we approve this, and you guys start the 17th tearing it down.
Probably within a week, yeah, give it, give us a little bit, but we've already told people, we're ready to go as soon as we get that, and we'll, we'll get in here and get a permit.
Okay, because I, I don't know, I mean, I know that's the expectation when I was sitting on the Board when all of this was coming up, was that that would be taken down really before now, and I know there's been some exceptions to, to work with you all to make that happen, I just want to make sure that we're not going to be taking another week to two weeks to a month, and then, next thing you know, two months, we're still dealing with the demolition of that hospital, so.
Take time to do it, we'll get started, but it will take time to do it, and it's not going to come down.
No, I, I got you, getting it started is just a big piece on it, I think, so.
We'll get equipment moved there to get, well, there's a lot of other things we can do to get prepped for the building, we'll have to have the staging area used, one will be asphalt, there's trees that have fallen down, those type of things get by the way, but you'll see some activity, which will help appease.
Okay, perfect. Did you have something, sir, go ahead? Yep. We'll bring in the muscle now.
Donovan Jones, 507, uh, Berkeley Court, Raymore, Missouri. Uh, we ha, actually have our attorney working with the current landowner's attorney on getting stuff signed, because we actually can't demo unless you've signed off on it, so they're working on paperwork now to get that signed. So, Steve's right, our lender does, with the economic situations now, they don't want to us to close on until we get our final win, it can backtrack, but we are working with her attorney, our attorneys work with her attorney to get the proper documents.
And you foresee that being wrapped up to where a week, most of, most of two weeks out, you guys can start, like you said, start.
I mean, there's a lot of things we have to do before we demo it, with DNR, uh, we've got our environmental's done, we have to secure the site, we can't just go start tearing a building down without having fence around it, uh, so we'll start.
And you guys got all those plans ready to go and ready to roll, right?
For months.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a lot, a lot of work that's got to be done, I mean, it is an overrated, you know, overnight process, it's going to be pretty lengthy.
Well, I, as long as you guys know what the expectation of the citizens and this Board is, is that that is.
One of the things we need to do is get the fire marshal, the police, police chief, because once we fence that off, they're going to have trouble getting in there, and be, you know, we're going to have to figure out a way so they can still do their job in case there's something happens.
I'm not hearing a week to two weeks, like you were saying, is that what you're saying?
No, I mean, we'll start our process right away, but, I mean, I don't want to just take the trackos in there and start tearing a building down without a fence around a thing.
No, I got you, I got you, but fences up and things start happening a week, two weeks after.
Yeah, we'll start right away.
Okay.
I just don't want everything, envision of these TikToks with China with 100 trackos in there, and if something happens overnight.
Okay.
You got to fence off, secure.
Okay, no, any other questions from the Board?
I might ask.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Your contractor, how long, what's the estimate he's giving you on demo?
Uh, I've had three months, and I also had a guy tell me four months. So, I've had a couple different bids on it, so, and that's just the building coming down, because we don't, they don't know what's going to entail in the base. Now, when they say that, that's start to finish, because I got to tear it down, get rid of it, and then I got to haul material back in to fill it back in, so, and I got to truck all that in, so it's not like a fast job, so, yeah, I mean, it's start to finish. And I'm sure Mr. Mills would be glad his chipper guy's going to go down the road and chip something else for a while, so.
Alderman Dorhoff?
I think you'd said this at a, at a previous meeting, but, uh, your plan is still to do all three phases at the same time?